Our town's business. I pray, Lord, that you'll give us the wisdom and knowledge that we need to make decisions according to your will. And I ask that you always continue to guide and direct us and help us to do what's best for our town, our employees and our citizens. Amen.
Pleasure ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council, thank you for being here this morning. I know we all have busy schedules. Mr. Wykel? Item four, items for discussion, general fund overview.
All right.
Your own, sir.
We're gonna dig right in. So this is a follow-up to our budget review last month. We're not gonna go into every detail we did last month. So this is just gonna be a review of the discussion that we had and some changes, some things to look at. So, general fund, we didn't have a whole lot of changes. The biggest change that you'll see in this, in this packet here is we had the town manager. We, we didn't have a town manager hired at the time and we didn't know if we were going to. Obviously, that has changed since then, so we've got that built in to the budget. And with that change, it increased our admin budget. So we had to pivot and make a few slight adjustments. However, those adjustments did result in a balanced budget. So, just like last month, our general fund budget is balanced. And you'll see in this packet, I didn't put, I didn't put the, all the details in the, from the packet from April. What I did was put the exhibits that did change and then I put revised underneath so you can distinguish between the original versus this exhibit. So exhibit four changed because of our, our numbers changed on the summary page. Exhibit five was our general fund revenues. So those changed slightly because of the fund balance appropriated. We did manage to put almost $3,000 back into the fund balance on this budget, even with the changes in the salary line. And we'll get into a little more detail as far as what changes were made for that. Is there any discussion on the revenue side before we go further?
You know, I, general question, should we be asking questions as we go through this or?
Yeah, well.
Deal with the questions at the end? The thing is, yeah, we looked at, we went through this on, in April, April 15, 16. We had a good budget workshop and as I've said several times, we were, we were presented with the best budget I've seen the town council presented with since I started watching this eight or 10 years ago. But, yeah, so we're gonna ask questions as we go through. I do have a couple of comments about the revenue.
Okay, yeah.
All right. What, at the last meeting just a week ago, the council passed a resolution that the, that the budget that we present on June 2, that we adopt on June 2, will make a positive contribution to fund reserves. And this revenue page indicates that the contribution that we were looking at in April of $61,000 is now down to just under $3,000. And my, I've already shared this with council by email, but my concern is that that's a very thin contribution to reserves, which can be blown away by any number of things between now and June 2, between June 2 and June, and July 1 when the budget starts. So I, I, I think we need to ask, I hope, I hope we're all prepared to ask some questions this morning that might help us get a little more cushion on that contribution to reserves than $2,990. So I guess that's not a question so much as an observation and a challenge to my fellow council members. On that revenue page, I, I, I will have you, I can't make a question out of this. We have the 24, 25 projected actual, which is based on as of April 30. So that's in fact everything that we had in the books, April 30? Or is that still a guess at April 30?
That's everything in the books.
That's in the books, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so as we go down that list, two or three things jump out on the revenue side and that's what we're looking at. We've gained $400,000 in interest on investments, $34,000 on power bill. We lost $50,000 on community center membership versus the budget. Each of these numbers are referring to versus the budget. We gained 400 interest, we gained 34 power bill, we lost 50 community center memberships. And we're gonna pop that back up by 50 in the new budget. So I think we ought to have a little explanation of that. And then down at the bottom, the proceeds from grants, we have no proceeds from grants. I guess we haven't received any yet, but it's my understanding that there's $500,000 of a state NDA, ADA grant pending for the, that will contribute to the pool cover. And then there's a $100,000 private donation that's out there in limbo. So can you just tell us where those numbers stand? And when we get to the, to June 2, are they gonna, does that column of projected actual gonna change?
Okay, so, all right, good questions. So proceed, the, the grants, we'll start with that one. So remember, we're talking about general fund here, fund 10. The pool grant, $500,000 and the donation that you spoke of, that's in a project fund, so that's in fund 31. So that wouldn't be reflected under fund 10 numbers here. So remember, we're just talking about the budget, the, it's an annual budget. So like the $30,000 you see here, that's because, that's for the carts, the grant we got for the carts. That's not in a project budget, that's actually in the operating budget, so.
So in the capital projects, that's not gonna impact the capital projects?
No, this is just fund 10 only. So you, the $500,000 will come in, but you'll see it under fund 31. We have that budget under fund 31. And we'll, we'll see that at the next council meeting, that, that budget number. But under this, it, it wouldn't show up because it's not going into general fund. And then I'll just touch on the community center memberships. Like you said, why, why are we going from up to 150 even though we're only projecting 100,000? If you recall, this past year, we did the renovation project. So a lot of our rentals, we didn't get as much as we thought. So now that we're at full capacity again, full operating, we'll be able to pull in that, those numbers. And you'll see in the proposed fee schedule that we are bumping some of those fees up too. So we'll go over that a little bit and that'll help with that number.
Yeah, that 150,000 takes us back to where we used to be. And what are memberships anyway? What's community center membership? What does the word, the membership word puzzles me a little bit.
That's gonna be your rentals and stuff, yeah, that's, it's, oh, I'm sorry, community center is a recreation center. So I was looking the wrong one.
Oh, that's recreation center.
Yes, that's not, that's not Rock School. So community center, that is, so the reason why that's going up is because of the pool, the pool bubble going up. So this year, we didn't have winter swimming, which hurt our numbers. So once the pool bubble gets up, or the pool dome, I'm trying to call it a dome, once that goes up in October, we anticipate that number going up to 150 again. So that's what that is, that's a recreation.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we don't show, we don't plan to show any proceeds from grants. Even though we have it in the budget for 25, 26 proceeds from grants, what, how does that differ from the proceeds from grants this year?
The 30,000, that's for the carts.
Yeah.
The, so sanitation, recycling carts, they're built into the general fund, fund 10. So that's why we're reflecting it there, because that's a grant for those. They're not gonna be in a separate project fund because that'll all get done in one year of time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. All right. So speaking of fee schedule, here we are. So the next exhibit that got changed in, from the original packet, exhibit eight, which is our 25, 26 schedule of fees. The only thing that changed on this exhibit from, compared to last time, was the old rock school fees. Remember, we had left those the same, depending on how council's direction. So the direction was to look at, what can we increase these two? So what you'll see on that first page is the highlighted changes from the prior year. So for, for example, under auditorium, that first column, the $600. So currently, that is $400 in this year's budget. So proposed would go up to 600, which I put out to the left side and increased 200 to try to make it a little more clear. So we're looking at changing all those fees for the auditorium, those tiered rates. Same thing with the Walden CN room, going to a tiered, that tiered system that we're currently in, but just changing some of those rates.
What is the difference between profit and nonprofit?
So profit would be like a, a business, nonprofit would probably be like your Old Colony Players.
Rotary Club.
Rotary, Rotary Club, yeah, things like nonprofit organizations, so they get a little bit more of a discount.
Are we differentiating enough for that?
Well, we, we currently have it set like that in the budget. So these, these increases are just, they're, they're equal increases for each section or sector. So they're already set up in the budget as profit versus nonprofit. So this is just increasing them equally.
I understand that, but again, I'm concerned that we have less than $3,000 in this budget going into our reserves. I'm also concerned that if we have community organizations that wanna use the Old Rock School, Rotary Club, I think rents the Walden CN room. And we have the BMW Railroad, which is a neat thing that rents space there. That's not part of this, but anyway, we, we, we're not, we're not differentiating between those service organizations that our citizens participate in and benefit from and nonprofit organizations, or profit-making organizations that come in to make a profit by renting our facility. So my, my question is, should we have more of a differential there? Should we charge these profit-making organizations more? And, you know, I don't expect you to, I'm not asking you that, I'm asking my fellow council members that. And along with that, a, for a continuing concern I have is we, we rent these spaces out without a contract. And we don't have security defined, whether it's a major event that the town does or a major event that somebody contracts for. So I'm concerned about our security liability. And, you know, those, those things are tied in. If somebody's coming in and, if we're gonna have a contract, I think we should. Otherwise, who's liable for something that goes bad? I mean, the unthinkable and the conceivables when somebody rents those facilities. So I worry about not having a contract. And if we had a contract, we, we might consider the, the fees along with the contract, you know, like a percent of the gate or something like that. But, and we, somebody can rent, rent the Old Rock School for, you know, an evening program and, and clear 10 or 12,000 dollars perhaps. And the town gets a few hundred bucks plus the total liability for anything that can go wrong. So that's, that's my concern. Does, I mean, does anybody else share that concern at all?
Do we currently have any kind of contracts in place for these groups that come in and use?
We've got an agreement form that we've been using.
Has nothing, it's not a contract though, but don't, don't.
It's an agreement form.
Yeah, it's a reservation form.
Is it, I mean, is it legal? Are there, is the liability in it if something would happen?
I can't answer that legal question.
Well, Attorney Swanson answered that. I mean, we talked about this before. He said he'd be happy to review contracts. He does that for the city of Hickory, but he doesn't do it for us, we don't have contracts.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to have him review it and put some terms and conditions in there.
Okay, I, I think that would be, that we need something like that, that he sets up a contract. I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and security is something we all would be thinking about.
Yes.
There's no question about that. You know, do you hire a security company, one person to come in? What do you do? Do you pay a police officer overtime to come in? I think that's something definitely needed, because I've seen that place packed out, you know, you never know what's gonna happen.
And I also, with the Walden CN room, I, I agree with Councilman Harvey that I would like to see for a nonprofit organization that a little less cost there, if that's possible.
Okay, so you wanna break out the, the Walden CN room?
Yeah.
For profit versus nonprofit?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I would be in favor of that.
Okay, we'll make note of that. All right. In addition to those changes under Rock School, we're introducing some what we call extra fees. So this is just an opportunity to bring in some extra revenue, some odds and ends things that has, that these renters asked for. So we wanna put a dollar of value on those, something simple as, you know, tables or a projector screen, things like that. So this is something that, you know, they're important things for renters, but, you know, we do still provide it as a service. All right, so nothing really changed much, or actually, nothing changed with the other schedules of fees. Was there anything in particular you wanna talk about with those that we didn't discuss last time?
I'll raise a question on almost every one of these. But again, we have a community center and we heard, the one, the most consistent thing we heard from public comments for the last 16 months or so, 17 months, whatever it's been, is we need to have year-round swimming. But we heard as much of that from non-residents as from residents. And we know year-round swimming is important, but, and we, and the council responded to that. And in fact, we could've had it this past year if we'd have been led down a path with better information. But anyway, here we are with, again, resident rates and non-resident rates. Residents pay taxes and provide a lot of support for community, regional activities of L Ds. And, you know, when you get back into water rates, we're cranking up our non-resident water rates to 1.75 this year and two times the residential rate next year. But with fees at the Aquatic and Fitness Center, we don't follow that, that kind of formula. So I think we oughta be consistent, I think, non-residents from, I mean, we've heard from people from all over Burke County, from Katava County, Cleveland County, tells us how important it was to have a swimming pool covered in the wintertime. But let's let them pay a little more towards it. So I think we oughta have a bigger differential between residents and non-residents for, for all, all these fees.
And we did look at that a few years ago, or was it last year's budget? We're at a point where we're, we're gonna be pricing ourselves out of the market because we do compete with Pfizer and with IMCA. So we have looked at those rates that they charge and we're at the top.
Have we done that this year? Have we seen, I haven't seen any data. Here's what, here's what was charged here, here's what was charged by L Ds. I haven't seen any data like that.
Okay, we can get that for you, but, yeah.
Well, I don't want it for me. I want, I wanna get fairness here. You know, I want non-residents to start paying, you know, their, their share of the cost of providing them with these services.
Yeah, and if you look at the individual, you know, annual for aquatics, it's 147 for inside and 223 for outside. So we, we are charging, you know, about 75 more dollars for, for a membership for outside.
I thought it was like 35% or something like that, is what I remember from last year when y'all looked at the rates. I mean, there's a 30% differential now. I mean, I would, I think that's a good differential and would leave that alone personally, just to keep people coming.
With, with the dome going up, it'll be interesting to see our numbers going into the new, the new season in the wintertime. We're hoping that we can maintain the amount of memberships that we had before all that happened. So we wanna make, we wanna check that data and give it a fair chance to get as many members as we can participating.
Is your next slide gonna be more of these recreation rates?
Yes.
Okay, so same, same issue there. Some of these things that we're providing for non-residents, like the ability to have a pool party on Sunday, we have to provide lifeguards and staff that, don't we? And, you know, do we really wanna be doing that kind of thing for non-residents? Or was using tax dollars to, to staff a pool party for non-residents?
They're having to pay more money.
Yeah, they pay more money, but do they pay the full cost of what it costs to open up the aquatic center for a pool party? I don't, I doubt it, but I don't know. Again, we never see those numbers, but I'm questioning them.
When you have a pool party, I mean, it's open, the public's also invited at the same time. You're just renting tables, is what I recall.
Right.
So, I mean, you've got citizens and non-citizens in there doing their activities, so.
Pool's already open.
Right, right.
For the public.
Yeah.
So there's really no extra charge, no?
They get charged for the party rental area.
Right, yeah, that part, but.
Yeah, lifeguards, yeah, lifeguards are gonna be there from what you do, rent the facility for the party.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we do have a, below a private pool party. So you can see that cost goes up significantly because that is a private pool rental. But that, that incorporates the time that it costs our staff.
So a private pool party closes it down?
Well, we're already closed down, it would just open it up for Sunday afternoons.
For that private party?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Sunday private pool party, Sunday afternoons.
Is that after the pool closes on Sunday that you would have the private party?
Uh, I had to check with David Arnett.
Because I think the pool's open on Sundays, so.
I think so too, so.
So would it be after?
I'd have to check with David Arnett.
It would seem like after hours you would wanna charge more because you are having to staff it longer.
Yeah.
See, public works, you know, we're charging for the construction debris, it's currently 75. I recommend bump that up to, $25 up to 100. That's really the only change under that section. Residential trash recycling, like we talked about at the last meeting, we're not proposing an increase in that because with these changes, potential changes to Simply Green, we're gonna be able to lower our cost to where we can pretty much match what we're bringing in. So it'll be self-supporting still.
I have a question about the solid waste, because I've gotten a couple of questions. People were saying in the past they weren't charged and then suddenly they were charged to $75. It was my understanding that if it was a large amount, that you did have to pay the 75. But is there some way to let citizens know, like, what is the limit? Because I know if you set out a chair or something like that, those things get picked up. But I understand if they've demoed a whole house, you know, you can't just leave that out at the curb and expect it to be picked up without a charge. So is there a way that we're differentiating, like, how much is too much to set out and be, not be charged as opposed to charge? Just because I'm getting questioned, I, I've had two people comment about it, so.
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's a couple of items, you know, we don't have any specific guidelines on that because every, every circumstance is different, but.
Is that $100, is that the rental for the dumpster?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you meant like, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I was getting questions because the other, a couple of days, or a couple of weeks ago, someone had, I believe, torn down a fence that was all laid up their road and they were questioning why we were charging $75 all of a sudden to have that removed. So I was just trying to see.
One of the challenges that we've had in the past is people will, let's say they do construction work. They'll do construction work at the site and then they bring all their debris back into town and dump it at their house for Alan to pick up.
Gotcha.
And that's, we, we put a halt to that.
Okay.
That might be where some of that stuff was coming in that you were talking about, people dumping on the side of the road.
And, and if, if they're hiring a contractor to do the work, then the contractor is responsible for hauling that debris off. But if they're doing their own, you know, renovations, then that's where it falls under our program.
I think when I saw it go up again, I was, or went, go up to 100, I was like, oh, boy, here we go. I knew it was gonna be an issue if we didn't differentiate, like.
That, that ran them a dumpster.
Okay.
Yeah.
A construction dumpster.
Okay.
And that, that construction debris per load's going up $25.
Correct.
To $125.
Yeah, which is still a lot cheaper than renting it from a private company.
Very mu, very much cheaper than renting from a private.
But I, I think the abuse of that is widespread though. People, there are a lot of do-it-yourself renovators in L Ds and people haul all kind of junk out and throw it out on the street and expect the public workers to pick it up. You know, I've had people complain to me that, you know, they want $75 to clean this up. And I go, look at the mess, and I'm like, I wouldn't clean it up for $75 and I just, you know, it dies right there. So that happens all the time. You know, I did a lot of up renovation, I don't know, 40 years, 50 years, most of it in Raleigh. But there's a whole cottage industry in Raleigh of guys with pickup trucks that if you got stuff like that, you hire one of these guys. And for, back in those days, 10, 15, 20, 25 old bucks, they haul it off to landfill for you. But here in L Ds, people just throw it out on the street. It's a wonderful service and I'm sure we all take advantage of it. But you see old mattresses laying out there, old refrigerators, I mean, stuff that you don't, just don't, other towns don't put up with, we put up with it. I mean, it's, it's fine that we do it, you know, not to suggest we cut back on that service. I'm just saying, we shouldn't take, citizens shouldn't take advantage of it as much as they do. It's, it's sad to see that, actually.
We do not have any more plots in the cemetery, correct?
Correct.
So that is showing us just for somebody transfers a date at this point?
Yeah.
Because you can't buy anymore.
Or somebody gives up a spot.
Or somebody gives up a spot, okay.
Yeah, they abandon it, which is unlikely, but it could, it could happen. Yeah.
People gotta quit dying.
That's the goal.
Is there any plan to expand the cemetery?
No plans at this time. We did look into it a couple of years ago and, I mean, we would never recoup our costs from it. And it's just more for us to maintain. So, I mean, council wanted to go in our direction, certainly we could. But I think the cost of the time to expand it, because we'd have to knock down that tank that's back there and demo that. It was, I, I can't remember exactly, but I wanna say it was around $80,000 to expand that to the rest of the parcel. And demo that, and it was, I, I can't remember exactly, but I wanna say it was around eighty thousand dollars to expand that to the rest of the parcel. So, you know, at, at four hundred bucks a, a spot, it's not gonna, you're not gonna get any money back on that.
The town could invest in the crematorium and probably make that self-funding. It doesn't take up, they don't take up much space, but. That's sometime in the future. Some future manager can deal with that one.
There you go.
Meanwhile, Eric, council will take care of your stuff. We don't have a place for you, Eric.
So, under the planning department, we talked about this last time, but currently we only have three fees under planning. That's the conditional use permit, zoning map amendment, and variance application. We looked at some other towns, um, we were in the minority on how much and how, for what items we charge for. So, looked at this and kinda revamped our fee schedule for planning that, cause there's a lot that planning is involved with. It costs a lot of time. Um, so this, what this does is it helps curb some of those, just people being curious about stuff. Or if they're really serious, then these fees will kick in. So, um, this, this kinda revamps that department a little bit. It's been a long time since we've been able to do some revamp, aren't those fees?
I, I have a, a major concern about those fees. If you look at them closely, they're, they're a real deterrent to, uh, residential development. And, I'm, I've already heard developers complain because we only have a, a planning office open here one day a week. And they couldn't get an appointment to get something approved. But to lay these kind of costs on somebody that wants to come in and develop a subdivision. That's gonna result in more than a million dollar, uh, uh, taxable property. I think is, 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 you know, not in the best interest of economic development for the town. Uh, I didn't do much economic development, I didn't do much residential development in Valdez. But the one little experience I had was a, I guess would be a minor subdivision. Because it required approval by the planning director. It was a two lots, it was two lots. And I walked into Larry Johnson's office, he put his initials on the survey, and I took it over to Burke County and had it recorded. So that was done. Took him as long as it takes to do your initials. Uh, but it would've, since it was two lots, it would've cost me a hundred and sixty dollars. I wouldn't have objected to that. But presently, on those two lots, uh, there's now about, uh. One point two million dollars of, uh, real estate, uh, assessed, real estate paying property taxes. So, I don't, I don't know if, if we have somebody, some developer that wants to come in and, uh. Try to get a planned urban development underway that's gonna have a lot of homes on it. He could spend a few thousand dollars just, just getting approval of it, I think. I'm just not sure that's, that's a, that's a wise, uh, strategy. But, I mean, who would know, except developers on, I don't know, I think maybe we oughta, for some way we could talk to developers about it. We might wanna do this a little differently.
Majority of municipalities charge for planning services, don't they?
Well, that's good, you know, that would give, if we didn't charge, that would give us an advantage, I think. We're, the majority of municipalities are growing with subdivisions, we're not. We gotta be careful about doing whatever people do, just because other people do it.
Mr. Herms, what has been your experience with these fees in a planning department?
In my experience, these are pretty commonplace, and, uh. In, in, in certain circumstances, some developers have asked for us to waive, uh, for the fees to be waived, which would come back to council.
Are our fees in line with, with other, say, Maiden or Morganton or?
Uh, they're on the lower end.
We're on the lower end?
Yeah.
So, if it's Maiden or Morganton or Hick, we're probably charging more than we're charging?
From my re- I didn't research it, but from my memory, yes.
Yeah.
Let's see, uh, Maiden is a town about the same size of Valdez in population. And I think the square miles is not too different. Uh, I'm sure you recall what your annual property tax revenue was in Maiden?
Yeah.
That's about?
So you're talking total or just residential?
Uh, to- total property revenue, yeah. Ours is, ours is about two point four million total.
Uh, tax base is pushing four billion, so you'd have to do the math. I wanna say it's around nine, nine million dollars a year. But now, you also gotta realize, only about eight hundred thousand of that's residential, rest of it's industrial commercial.
Right, but you got a tax, tax base almost four times, uh, Valdez's, so. Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's hard to compare apples to apples when we don't, we don't have apples. We don't have much land for residential development, and what little land we do, hopefully. And, and Mr. Herms, your predecessor and, and our previous planning director. Uh, had us fast-tracked to be the, uh, low-income housing capital of western North Carolina. But we've, we slowed that down a little bit, but it would be nice if we'd have some market, market rate housing development on Valdez. And I think anything we could do, uh, to help that come along. Yeah, other than tack fees onto people that might help it come along, would be a good thing to do.
Uh, I think most of your legitimate professional developers are inspected. I don't think this is uninspected from your bigger developers now. Some of your smaller mom and pops may have more difficult fees.
Fire department, just a few things here. If you remember the la- uh, this current budget. The fee schedule for fire department's two pages long, so what was done here was look at condensing that. Cause it was very confusing for everyone. So, basically, like you see at the bottom there, just taking the fire code, chapter one, chapter nine. And just anything that falls under those codes would be relative to that fee amount, rather than trying to list them out individually. It was much cleaner to do it this way. So we just kinda condensed some things, didn't really increase any of those, but just condensed some things there. And I think what we learned on this one was, uh, just be careful not to run over any fire hoses. So we.
And that, that actually probably ought to be more caused to replace, uh, a piece of hose is more than that.
Yeah.
Penalty right there. So that, that might be one you wanna look at, jacking up.
Okay.
Which ones have, Eric?
The penalty for running over fire hose.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question, since you're more familiar with this? Um, as far as the re-inspections, if you're not in compliance, does that, is that the same for a nonprofit or a church? Okay, so when they have to, the first time they come out and inspect, if they have to come back out and inspect, then it's. Two hundred dollars for that?
The way that works is, is they come out and do the, the initial inspection.
Mm-hmm.
And then they come back for the follow-up inspection, and usually what happens is the people that are not doing anything to meet compliance. They just shove it under the rug and say, we're not doing that, they're gonna get that citation.
Okay.
If, if a person is, or, or an organization is showing that they're making an effort.
Okay.
The, the fire department will work with.
Okay, that was my only concern, cause I know a lot of churches, nonprofits.
Yeah.
That's a concern.
That's, that's basically for those folks that don't feel like they need to comply with the fire code.
Okay, but if you're working toward trying to, okay, cause that fire code is not fun to try to figure out. So I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, so that takes us out of fees and schedules and puts us into the, uh, department expenditures, exhibit nine.
Before you leave nine.
Uh-huh.
Oh, I think council, this council needs to give itself a pat on the back here. In the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that we inherited, uh, it had salaries and wages of. Plus group insurance of seventy-two thousand dollars. This budget, as a result of the changes we made, those two items total forty-two thousand dollars. So, this council has reduced that cost to taxpayers by thirty thousand dollars. Just didn't want that to go unnoticed.
Sure. Scroll down to these, uh. So, these numbers changed slightly from our last one, meeting. Because of the, um, health insurance. So remember, what was proposed and what council decided to go with, actually lowered our health insurance cost a little bit. So, each department gets hit with that, uh, gets that benefit, so that just rolls into, um. Putting towards that savings for the, uh, fund balance appropriated. Other than that, there were, other, other than that, and the admin salary line, that was really the only changes since the last time we talked about this.
Before you leave that one, huh, that, uh, salary and wages line, how many employees does that, uh, represent?
Which one?
Oh, you're on administration, that's where you.
Oh, on, okay.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Yeah, administration.
Yeah, right. How many employees is that?
That is gonna be five employees.
Five employees, so that would be looking at three here. And there are two somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it's finance and administration.
Okay, and then part-time pay, what is that for?
That's a, for a part-time customer service.
Okay, so we have. Really have four, in addition to yourself, I guess, two full-time and one part-time. Person in the finance area.
Right.
And then there's a vehicle involved there that we have for their use, uh. And I guess there's a process here that I'm just, just gonna raise a question about, a general question. That is, when this building was built, it wa- I don't know why it was built the way it was, uh, for three times as big as the. Previous town hall, but, uh, uh, the number of administrative employees hasn't changed in that period of time. But technology's changed a lot. And, you know, so we have a drive-through place where people can pay something. I guess originally they could pay taxes there, but now that we pay Burke County thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars a year to collect our taxes. So people go through that window and pay utilities. Uh, do they get a, do they wait there to get a receipt, or are they just dropping it off?
They, they get a receipt.
They get a receipt every time they take it by. Okay, um, I know some towns, uh, have a drop box. They don't, they don't do, they don't have a window. They have a drop box and people can drop their payments off to save on postage, I guess.
We have that too, we have a drop box.
Where's the drop box?
Right next to the drive-through window.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, every year, every month, I get a utility bill, you know, like all of us, it tells me on there what I paid the last time. I don't feel like I need a receipt every time. Do, do we need to keep, and is that window, so if somebody. Is that eight hours a day that somebody can drive up there and, and they'll get a receipt? Or they can walk in the front and get a receipt? And then the banking processes requires to maintain a, uh, a vehicle. Uh, we'd get mail in the post office, I guess, the post office boxes, so do we drive up to pick it up, or does somebody walk up and get that?
Uh, most of the time we gotta drive, cause there's a lot of mail.
Gotta drive and haul it to the post office?
To transport the mail, yeah. It'd be a lot to carry back sometimes, and boxes and stuff that come in.
I don't know, that's just, I guess, let me just hang that out there for the new team of the new manager and the finance director. I think we need some process analysis there, there might, there might be some savings there of, uh. You know, any, in any enterprise, your, your biggest ongoing rising uncontrollable cost is staffing. And if there's some way that we can use technology to reduce the staff or two. You know, the enterprise that I manage had bigger, bigger revenue. It was Haley customer service-based, but didn't have, didn't have that many finance, uh, employees, finance department employees, so.
And we, we do offer auto draft, uh, we try to push that as much as possible. A lot, there's quite a few of our customers that don't have checking accounts, they only do cash only in life. So, for those, those, they don't wanna do it the drop box, they, they bring it in in person.
They bring cash in person.
Mm-hmm, there's, there's quite a few that do that.
And then there's a security issue there. Cash isn't there on two ends of it. One is the person handling the cash, and the other end is getting it into the bank.
Well, yeah, and we've, we've solved the deposit issue with, we have police doing that now.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, you didn't tell us that, that's good news.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have an armed courier who delivers the.
We do.
Cash to the bank.
We do, yeah.
That's wonderful, really is.
Yeah, that started May first, so.
Good deal.
Can I, can I interject something right, right quick also? It's also important to know that under North Carolina Finance and Gatsby, we have to have enough personnel to have separation of se- separation of duties. So that we don't get dinged or audited, and it also limits fraud. So, uh, three is pretty much the minimum number you can operate municipality with without those two things being a, being an issue.
Yeah, we learned that in a seminar that someone was attending at, uh, in Boiling Springs a couple of months ago. And in fact, there was one thing that we seemed to be deficient in, and it was a designated, uh, second finance officer. Who had that authorization, so, uh, I don't know, hopefully get that taken care of too. But, and, and quite frankly, one of the things, we hear a lot of stuff from citizens, you know, and we, we just have. Answer it the best we can, or don't answer it sometimes, but one of them is, well, we're paying Burke County thirty-five thousand dollars. For, uh, collecting our property taxes, how come we have a tax collector right up there on the town website? So, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just learning Valdez. That's a Valdez feature. I know the answer to that, but I don't wanna explain it to everybody.
Okay. So, kinda related to that, exhibit ten was the personnel sheet. Um, this is, the only thing that got revised here was, um, we added this twenty-four, twenty-five salaries column. Just so you can see the actual salaries comparison. So this, um, uh, other than the administration salaries changing from the last time, but just, we just added that column, uh, as we.
Are we still advertising, uh, for a planning director?
We are, yeah.
We are, and if we hire one, uh, what effect would that have on this recommended budget?
We've, uh, we've got funds in there for the COGS contract, so it just would really depend on what we pay the new person. I, I can't answer what that salary would be at this point, but that COG contract would cover a good chunk of that.
Would it be within three thousand dollars of that?
Possibly.
Or maybe not.
Depends on who you get, you get somebody out of school.
I'm worried about that th- twenty-nine ninety margin that we're billed into the budget. I mean, that could go, if you hire somebody before July first.
How much are, how much do we have in there for the COG contract, bud?
I think it's like fifty-seven thousand.
Fifty-nine thousand four hundred.
Okay.
Something like that, yeah.
So, we, we could hire a new, brand-new person for somewhere around that.
Yeah, somebody out of school, maybe, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about CIP real quick. There was a couple of changes because of, that we made because of the salary stuff. And I, I won't go over the complete list, but I included those exhibits that were removed. So, to help balance the budget, we looked at some CIP items that weren't like critical to our operations. Fitness equipment, we do try to do that, you know, replacement on an annual basis, get rid of some of the old equipment. But we did remove that out of the budget for recreation. Another thing we removed was a replacement of the HVAC system in the men's locker room. It's currently running okay, so this was more of a preventive item. Hopefully we'll be able to get another year out of it, so that's why we took it out of the budget and we'll, we can move it to next year's.
Oh, yeah, just on that one, I'm concerned about that because that thing is twenty-seven years old, I believe. It's had a lot of breakdowns, I just had to replace all mine for never about that age.
Yeah, I knew it would be more efficient, but, you know, we, we roll with it one more year.
Well, if it doesn't break down, but we don't know when it's gonna break down.
Yeah, I wish it could tell us when it would, but it's not going to, so. And then the other thing was more of an aesthetic thing at the Old Rock School, the drop ceiling tiles, just to match the other hallway. So, this was removed from the budget. But the exterior repairs, which are very important for the structure, we kept those in there. Okay. So, let's get down to recycling sanitation. The only thing that got revised on this exhibit, and you've already seen this a couple of times, but the, the card color is really the only thing that changed. So, we, at, at last month's budget meeting, we had black carts. And council mentioned that they wanna see something a little more neutral, something to blend in with the environment. So, green carts, sanitation would have black lid, recycling would have a, a blue lid. Reason why we're going with the same color carts is we do have to keep some inventory in case they get broke. Having the same color for both operations would help us keep less inventory on hand. So, all we would have to do is replace the lid color. And we'll, we're, I will ask them if they can like put in print recycling on top of the blue lid or something like that to help.
Keep the public from having to learn different colors again also.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Those decals that are on there, we, we have, I think we heard, when we thought, asked this question before, that we have about sixty old carts that were left over from before Republic that we use for special events and things. Do they have decals on them, or if not, could we put these decals on them as well?
I don't know if they have decals or not. They do that at the factory, so I don't, we.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we're not gonna, th- those are not decals, they're actually molded into the body.
Okay.
So, they won't ever fall off.
So, it's not just a sticker?
Right, no, it's not a sticker, it's actually molding into it.
Forget that question, okay.
Yeah. So, we know that it's, time is, is of the essence with this, because we gotta get the carts ordered, we gotta get that process moving. So, on the agenda for today is the Simply Green Contract. Now, Attorney Swanson has gone through it very thoroughly with their attorney, it's all been finalized, it's ready to go. So, if this is the route we wanna go, we're asking council if that can be approved today. That'll let me go ahead and start getting these carts on order. And what, our goal is to hopefully start that in July. Cart's taking about six weeks to get built, from what I'm being told. So, we would plan on putting an insert in the water bills for, that would be going out in June to notify the public of what's going on. So, that's our plan.
You wanna do that now?
I think, yeah, if we're good with that.
And this thirty thousand dollar grant would apply to the cost of this.
Correct, correct, yeah.
That's good. Council ought to entertain a motion to approve the Simply Green Contract for trash disposal and sanitation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Simply Green Contract for trash and recycle.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion as second, all those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, council, thank you both for your work on that.
No, I, I didn't realize we were gonna jump away from our general fund so fast, but that's, that's fine, we've got something important on here. Before we jump, before we go into the utility fund, can we go over the capital expenditure?
Okay.
Display that was in the agenda packet?
The spreadsheet?
Right.
Okay.
How about the one right before that, that's a little simpler, easier to read?
The summary page?
Yeah, right there, just, can you just tell us what each of those is? And then I might have a question or two, and others may as well about some of them. Like administration and planning, sixty thousand dollars, that's for what?
Okay, so that's, that's detailed down here, so that would be replacement of an HVAC unit. Remember, we're, we've got eight of them here for this building, so trying to get those replaced as, as they're getting older here. That includes a pay study, council had discussed the importance of that. And then twenty-five thousand for financial planning model that first try-on. Recall, they had done a presentation for us. So, that, that would give them the chance to put the model together and work with us. That's not a recurring cost, that's a one-time cost with them. So, that's kinda what is built into that.
Okay, but that HVAC system, it would be how many years old?
Uh, at this point.
Fifteen.
Yeah, somewhere around there, yeah.
So, we're gonna, we need to replace that, but we don't need to replace one that's twenty-seven years old?
Well, 'cause they don't make them like they used to, right?
What's that?
They don't make them like they used to.
I don't know about that. Go ahead, I mean, that's, I think we've, we've covered those three things. The pay study, we know that's, you know, it's been seven or eight years since the town did a pay study, it's time to do that, right, no question. And I don't know how many people realize how important that first try-on financial fun, fun planning model is, but that's, that's gonna be the town's salvation, I think, in the long term.
It'd be very useful to have, that's for sure.
Boo under streets, place a nineteen-eighty-seven Ford tractor?
Yes, sir.
And get the one that's got that swing arm on it, is that sixty-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay, and that'll be bought this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, I have a problem with that one, that's, that one, the efficiency, former efficiency task force recommended last year it not be, it come out of last year's capital budget, and it did. That's the kind of thing, a one-time purchase for us, kind of a unique use, that I really think we need to give our, our new town manager, Herms, time. I, I think, I think this one needs to come out of this budget, out of this budget here. We need to give our town manager time to really get into the town's equipment. And I have the same comment about the sixty-seven thousand dollars for a police vehicle too. I don't, I don't doubt that in each case something needs to be replaced, but I don't think the urgency is that they have to be replaced on June three. And what history tells us is that within days, if not hours, from adoption of a budget, these capital, some of these capital expenditure purchase orders will be issued. And I don't think there's that kind of urgency there. I think we need to give Mr. Herms time to get to know the managers, get to know, get him to go through the financial analysis that they went through, look at the data, see if there's a better way to do something than, I mean, how many tractors do we have? What are we using them for now? And, you know, is there a better way to do it? Police cars, we need to look at all the police cars, look at the mileage, look at the repair, maintenance schedules on them. Maybe that's been done, or maybe it hasn't, you know, we, we don't know. But let's give Mr. Herms time to do that. And that's why I feel that that item and the police item, those two oughta come out of the budget at this point. Let Mr. Herms bring them back into the budget if he decides they're needed or something else is needed instead of that. We, we're jumping around a little bit, Public Works has seven thousand dollars in here, I'm not sure what that's, is, but Public Works had a major, we had to make a major change here last year because when Hurricane Helene went through, turns out we didn't have an emergency generator to even pump fuel into the vehicles when, when the Public Works was without power. So, we had to amend the budget to get a generator, a backup generator in the Public Works Department that had never appeared in any capital planning. And by the way, is that thing up and running? Is it, it's, okay, so we have the hookup now, it's all ready to go. So, power goes out next week, we can still pump?
Yes, sir.
Diesel fuel, good.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was taken care of, but my point is, you know, you need a hard look at some of these things because some of them just get overlooked.
The Public Works is for the HVAC.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, I would assume that's something that's about on its last legs.
Mm-hmm.
And that's that seven thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
HVAC, that's.
We didn't hear that, is that one?
Yeah, it's on that.
Yeah, it's on the.
That's what's on it, HVAC.
That's not the one you took out? No, that was the rec center one you took out, okay. So, how old is this Public Works HVAC?
Uh, it's in the, it was in the capital request form, I don't remember what we quoted, I can.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
It was in that original packet how old it was.
So, that would be to keep who warm or cool?
The offices.
The offices, okay.
Yeah.
And then, I hate to split this way, but so the rec center, which has a twenty-seven-year-old HVAC system that's been breaking down that we pull, we're not gonna replace, serves our citizens, if this HVAC is to serve our police? Well, it probably needs to be replaced, be replaced, but, I don't know.
There, there's been a lot of repairs at the rec center HVAC, so with those newer parts, we're thinking that one might last a little longer rather than repairing this one.
The tractor for the street department, that's the one the efficiency committee said to buy this year, is that correct?
This one right here?
Yeah.
They said don't buy it last year.
Right, they said to buy.
The efficiency, no, the efficiency committee didn't have any, they didn't have any input to this year's budget. I'm sorry, the deficiency, efficiency committee expired, but their, their scope was last year.
Is that the tractor that we mentioned at the first meeting had some, didn't have the cage around it, had safety issues that had been called out on it as well?
That's correct.
So, that would be important from a safety perspective to have a newer, something new that was meet NOSA requirements or that type thing.
Yeah.
We need to have Mr. Herms review all our equipment, I think, before we buy any new equipment.
I think if you go down and look at that old nineteen-eighty-seven tractor with that sickle mower on it, if you haven't, go down and look at it, it, it's shot, there, there's no question.
You thought it's an old farmer who just, not too long ago sold his nineteen-eighty-one tractor, a Bushog. But it's not for us, let's let the manager decide. That's all I'm saying, let's let the manager look at all of our equipment. We, it's not the only tractor the town has.
Well, it's, it's in our budget.
No, it's not, it, well, it is so far. I'm suggesting that we take that one out of this budget until our manager can review it, along with all of our other tractors. We, that's not the only tractor we have.
Well, I think it's the only tractor that's got a Bushog or a sickle type mower on it.
Well, I don't think that's true.
Yeah.
But let's let the manager decide.
Yeah, that's the only one we've got that's got the sickle blade on it.
Well, sickle blade, yeah, sickle blade's one of, years ago, but that's not, a sickle blade mower isn't, doesn't cost sixty-five thousand dollars to replace.
Counsel, what are you gonna do with this? We've beaten a dead horse to death, leave it or take it out?
I say we leave it.
I agree.
Well.
I agree.
We have a council, it's, see, this is a how, this is the kind of thing that ought to be the manager's responsibility. The manager hasn't been, he's only been in place for a week, he hasn't had a chance to look at all of this, and we're throwing tax dollars around here like they're ain't nothing.
Let's do, it'll be left in the budget, and when it comes time to make the purchase, then the town manager can make that decision. That way, if we have to buy it, the money's there. If we don't have to buy it, you can put the money back into the capital fund.
Okay.
That's kinda the backwards way of doing it, but.
Well, that's the way we're gonna do it.
That's the way the town's always done it, you put, put everything in the budget and then it gets spent, it's gone. And we'll hear from the staff, but it's in the budget, and it's gone. That's, I mean, the, the town, we've, town's got a long history here, that's longer than the memory of our council members.
Move on to your next item, sir.
Okay. Let's.
So, that tractor, sixty-five thousand dollars is gonna stay in the budget, is that what everybody decided?
Yes, sir, and if our manager decides we don't need it, then the money will go back into the capital reserve.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think it's a good compromise.
Yep.
And how about the police vehicle, we gonna order that on June three, or is that gonna, we're gonna give the manager a chance to review that one?
Handle it the same way.
Same way?
Which one?
The police department.
And how about all the air conditioners, HVAC is the one in this town hall, the one for the Public Works, the one for the rec center?
I think Bo and the manager can make that as decisions also. Okay, I guess we're down to community affairs.
Down to what?
Community affairs for capital budget.
Well, that was the soffit and fascia on the outside, remember there's some water intrusion happening there, so we could that sealed up, it'd be better for the building. So, that was important to keep in there.
Yeah, they say, the concern with the community affairs budget, this, the, the president needs, no question about that. You gotta, you gotta take care of that stuff, it's, the building's gonna deteriorate more. The problem there is the next hundred thousand dollars, a hundred eighty thousand, two hundred forty thousand dollars spread out over a long period of time. As from, and the, the original explanation for those was windows. There's no question those windows need to be replaced, but I've, I've mentioned before, I think that is an ideal example of something for which there must be grant funds available. Staff did a wonderful job gathering up about one-point-two million dollars of grants to pay for one and a half million dollars of renovation to the Old Rock School last year. And I think the replacing all the windows will add, it might add a hundred years, but it certainly add forty or fifty years to the life of that Old Rock School, and a tremendous amount of energy savings. And so, between the energy and the historic preservation, I think there's really solid grounds for going out and justifying grants for replacing those windows. And that's something that I think whether, before we start, and, you know, some future council will hear next year, but, but we had a hundred thousand dollars in there to spend for windows, well, I think we need to get some work underway to see if we can't raise funds and get the community behind supporting a, a capital fund drive maybe to rescue, help preserve and extend the life of that historic Old Rock School, which is our community cultural center.
Say anything beyond that first column is, is just a plan. So, if we do come across some funding, whether it be grants or community and whatnot, then that, that, those numbers can be adjusted as we go along. And it may be something where we do an all-in-one chunk, if we get a grant, depends on how much it is, but we could do a. And it may be something where we do an all-in-one chunk. We get a grant, um, depends on how much it is, but we could do a one, you know, one big project at one time rather than spreading across. But right now, it's the best plan we've got because we've got no funding in place, is to try to spread that cost out as much as possible.
Yeah, and that, but, and that's right, but, uh, that's why, but the grants aren't just going to come along. I mean, they have to, you have to go after them. You've gone through, um, an experience with, with grants, sir, in the last few weeks. I just don't want us to end up like, like we did with, uh, streets where we moved sixty-five thousand dollars out of the current year's budget and put it into the future, and now we sit up here and say, well, we had it. We, we decided to do it this year. Well, we didn't decide to do it this year. It's just, it got moved out of last year. But this, the stuff doesn't just happen. And the grants that we got, I mean, they, they didn't, they didn't just happen. We didn't have a million and a half of, uh, renovation of the Old Rock School spread out across. But I'm not saying we shouldn't have it there. I'm just trying to make the case enough times, loud enough, that our new manager hears it and that our staff gets out and, uh, uh, starts plowing the ground, trying to find ways to get enough grants to replace all those windows and extend the life of that building for forty or fifty or a hundred years.
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation, um, we talked about the two items we cut out, but we also left in there the Tiger Gym, uh, refurbishing that lobby area. The flooring is a hazard right now, peeling tiles, so taking those tiles up and just keeping a concrete floor, um, refinish it with an epoxy, uh, to give it a nice look. And then Fletcher Field, we know those scoreboards out there are ancient. Um, they definitely need some attention. So that would address th- those as well.
Yeah, I think those are the original ones back in the early eighties that were put in.
Yeah, and they, they no longer mount them on wooden poles anymore. They do metal poles, so that, that includes that cost to do that. That's really all I had, uh, as far as general fund. Do you want to take a break before we get into utility?
Let's do. Take about ten minutes, counsel.
All right, we'll go into the utility fund. So this one's a little shorter, changes. We'll go into the summary page here. Again, you'll see, um, the changes we did make. It's, we still have a, a difference of zero between our revenues and expenditures. So this, this budget is balanced, um, same way we did, we talked about before, and we'll go into how it, how it's balanced. Um, on the revenue side, we've got those couple of big projects we talked about in the CIP. So we've got proceeds from financing currently proposed in the revenues. That very well could be something we could use out of reserves to do these projects. But what I did was, you, you saw this before, but we had the two projects that we'll have to somehow borrow or pay from reserves. Um, we've got a additional, where you see it says less cash from additional revenue. So if those two projects were out of the budget, they weren't included in the CIP, then our, uh, fund balance would be increasing to eight hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. So that's the easiest way for me to explain it to you. So we're taking the eight ninety-two and taking away from the total project costs, which would leave a balance of coming up with the rest of those funds to do those projects. So I put down there, uh, example, if we borrow for seven years versus fifteen years. And we talked about we can do a combination of things. What we ended up discussing at the last meeting was leave that under proceeds from financing for now. Look at how first try and help us maybe get some good rates. If we can't obtain good rates on that, then maybe looking at taking those from reserves. Um, so just because it's in there like that doesn't mean that's necessarily how it has to happen. What, what we do want to point you to is, what if we used all of that towards fund balance? Currently, we have a seventy-nine percent fund balance. So if we reuse that one point eight million, would drop us around fifty percent, fif- fifty, five zero percent, which isn't bad. Uh, that's, that's still a comfortable level. Um, I wouldn't want to see us go any lower than that, but still, I think that's very manageable.
I think, well, I think there were a couple of other, uh, considerations there. One is, uh, it's correct that neither, the town has to fund both of these. Neither of these are covered under, well, the water plant electrical substations, not covered under our, uh, Lenore, uh, grant, uh, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so we, the town has to fund that one. And the Rutter, Rutter Street sewer replacement, that's actually in two parts, right? One down each side of the street. And so one possibility would be to do, uh, decide that eats it the worst first. Right?
That, that, you could break it up. Um, you're going to pay a, a better price to do it all at one time with the contractor? So they don't have to re-mobilize and, and you, the bigger project you have, the cheaper overall per foot price you're going to have. So that's why we've got it lumped together like that.
But you also have to pay, uh, interest on the loan.
Yeah, yeah. And our customers, like, which side do you pick to do first? And one's going to be a loser and one's going to be a winner on that one. So that's, that'd be a hard decision for council to make if we were to split that. You're going to have to get a loan at some point to do it because, um, you could do pay-as-you-go, but basically we borrow from ourselves.
You think there's no grant possibility for either of these projects?
We've been looking for grants, but nothing's available right now. Everything's going to Western North Carolina right now, from DWI. We, there's no funds, they're not giving any funds to any municipalities right now. And this is not storm-related, so it's, it doesn't qualify for any...
You're not what?
It's not storm-related, hurricane-related, so it doesn't qualify for any grants from DWI. Before we get too deep into that discussion, just, let's just drop down to the rates because that's kind of what's driving all this, and that's the only changes that we've made. So what we talked about on the rates last time, we, remember, we had ten percent for sewer. We had five percent for, um, inside water residential. And then we had proposed a two-times rate for outside water. So those were the, the main things we looked at. Council's direction was, let's look at going thirty percent on the sewer, and how does that affect our overall revenues and what would that do to the water rates? So when we plug those numbers in, we do a thirty percent. And, um, when we talk thirty percent, it sounds like a big number, but it's only equivalent to three dollars and twenty-five cents on the water bill, water sewer bill. So increasing the water sewer bill on the sewer side by three dollars and twenty-five cents, that would result in, uh, allowing us not to increase the water rate, so keeping it flat for another year like we did last year.
Yeah, just in, on, in Valdez residents only?
Right, in, in Valdez. So inside, um, they would have a three dollar and twenty-five cent sewer rate increase. What that does for outside is we talked about going to one point seven five. So instead of, instead of the inside rate going up five percent and then another one point seven five on top of that, it's one point seven five on the flat rate. So it would increase their outsider, uh, bill nine dollars and eighty-five cents. And we talked about one point seven five kind of being the sweet spot for, um, other ta- other towns that use outside rates, like Morganton. If you, their structure's a little different ours, but if you go through the math for a minimum water user, it's at one point seven five. So that's a pretty common industry thing to have a one point seven five rate for outside users. At that point, you, outside would stop increasing, and then you would just have any incremental changes that would be the same as inside. So let's just say inside goes up four percent next year on the rate, then outside would also go four percent. So you'd always maintain that one point seven five. But by doing thirty percent on the sewer, that, that allows us that flexibility to keep that, um, water at a flat rate because the, the sewer is making up for the revenues that the water would have brought in. So that's kind of where we're at on that, and that's what's driving these numbers. That's why you see the budget didn't really change that much because it was almost a, uh, even swap there. But that does help boost our sewer rates because we are quite behind on our sewer, so by focusing on that, it does help.
Yeah, my reaction to, a couple of reactions to that is, uh, every, everybody, I think, knows the cost of, uh, providing us with, uh, portable water goes up every year. I don't think we need to keep the residential rate flat again. It was flat last year. The other thing is, of all the complaints that we heard from our outside, uh, water customers, I think the most common one I heard was, but you didn't raise residential rates, you just raised them on us. So I, I, you know, and the sewer, I think the sewer rates are fine. But personally, I think it, it might be good for a number of reasons to, uh, raise the, uh, residential minimum rate a little bit. And, uh, well, it raises residential rates a little bit. And, uh, then I've got a couple of comments about the commercial industrial rates. But as far as residential, I mean, does anybody else have an opinion on that? We all pay water bills. We're all glad to see our water bill not go up again, but, uh, you know, is that fair enough?
Are you looking at the three ninety? Is that what you're looking at, three ninety?
I look at the thirty-eight fifty and the three ninety, the two of them, yeah.
I've only had comments from outside folks that just say, please don't raise our rates again.
That, and that's what I've heard too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what did you hear?
Uh, from outside people. Please don't raise us after the last year increase.
Right.
I guess I had the most called complaints about
For the outside people.
Water rates from outside people. And we saw it here in council meeting too, a lot of people, but... And we can get ready for that again, it looks like.
And one point seven five, like I said, is, is some, some municipalities do go up to two times a rate, so that's, that's not what we're proposing here, is one point seven five. Because we do have projects like the electrical substation that, that serves all our customers. It's a huge expense. We got to keep that maintained for, you know, it's, it's not two thousand inside. It's, we've got five thousand some outside customers, or, I mean, total customers that rely on that. So, um, there is a cost to maintaining lines, lines further out in the system. You know, our lines go all the way up one eighty-one, um, you know, trying to get that. Did I say one eighty? I think I meant one eighteen.
Are you saying one eighty-one or eighteen?
Eighteen, I'm sorry.
That's what I thought.
I was driving on one eighty-one the other day, yeah. Yeah, sorry. We don't go that far.
So, but as, as council members who are all residents, we're, we think that if we were to raise the, uh, residential rate to a dollar and a half and ten cents, uh, per, uh, thousand gallons extra, is that, we think that's, that wouldn't be a good idea. I just, I think that would help sell the, uh, what we do external, to external customers. Not that we have to sell it, they're our customers, but, um, why don't, you know, why should we residents get a free ride two years in a row here as far as rate increases go? I guess, to put that in numbers, I, you know, I'd round ours up to thirty-nine ninety-five or forty dollars minimum, instead of leaving it flat right where it was in twenty twenty-three.
And come down off the sewer a little bit then, or?
Uh, no, I wouldn't move, I wouldn't drop sewer. I think that's fine. It needs to go up too.
Okay.
I mean, you get, oh, I mean, it's not going to be that much more revenue. We could, we could absorb a little more revenue, I think.
It'd be less we have to borrow for projects. And we got, not these projects, just these, but we've got some more down the pipeline that are coming up in a couple of years. So we've got some big, big-ticket items coming up. But our infrastructure is old and it, um, that y'all have seen many repairs we're having to do. Um, so...
Yeah, we're going to need more money. I know, I, I like to be able to say to people, well, yeah, your rates went up, but you're not paying property taxes. But my water rates went up too. You know, but I can't, I haven't been able to say that now for two years. It'd be nice if we could say it next year.
And I don't have the slide in here, but when, uh, last month when McGill presented the slide, they compared to several different utility providers and, um, even with the increases they were proposing then, which was a five percent, that we were still second lowest on the list as far as our total costs. So we're still on the lower end of where we offer, um...
Yeah, so I think we could stand another dollar and a half as a residents.
The public needs to understand we're not trying to make a profit, but to provide clean water and maintain our system, it takes money.
Yeah, yeah. It, because if we don't maintain the system, then everything falls apart.
Yeah, we're trying to keep it good water, and we're trying to be fair.
Yeah, it's not what the outside residents think, can't hold.
I really wish people would, could understand that the two pots do not touch. And that is the hardest thing to get into the public's, um, view, is that our, you know, the general fund and the utility fund are two separate pots. And the other day when I was, uh, I, I was backed into a corner and cussed rather loudly. My husband had to rescue me, um, saying, you're making our, uh, water go up again while Valdez gets a pool cover and all this. And I was, it doesn't come from the same, a- and it just did not want to hear it. But if there's any way that we could somehow really explain, this is, this is only for, um, maintaining our water lines, ensuring that we have clean drinking water. Um, that's, that's it, and, and our sewer is taken care of, so...
And it's not just our lines, but it's our water plant.
Yeah, water plant is got, we've got to have it.
I think the media might be able to help us with that challenge.
It's also, it's also important to note that on the outside, uh, you don't have the density that you do on the inside. So if you take a mile of water line inside of city limits, the revenue you make off that mile is significantly higher than that same mile out in the county where you don't have the commercial businesses, the industrial businesses, and the density of homes. So that's the theory behind having a higher water rate on the outside. It's not for us to make more revenue, it's to try to even the gap on what it costs us to maintain that mile of water line. It, I mean, uh, I don't have it in front of me, but you can, uh, there's several studies out there that show, you know, for each mile of water line, you can expect to gain this amount of revenue on the inside versus outside statewide. So that's the theory behind charging a higher rate on the outside versus inside. It has nothing to do with property taxes, which, you know, it does, but at the end of the day, we have to maintain that water line. And if you don't get enough revenue off of it, you, then you're subsidizing the outside customers. So that's the theory behind charging more for outside versus inside.
Yeah, and our history of Valdez is we took over water system that was failing about six or seven years ago. And a bunch of bad lines in it, and those, but part of the deal was, first of all, we wouldn't raise the rate for I think five years above the residential rate. And the second one is, we're, we have underway now, fortunately, grant-funded, three million dollars replacing just a chunk of those lines that we inherited. So, yeah, it's, it's costly out there. But again, I, you know, as a... Yeah, it's, it's costly out there. But again, I, you know, as a resident and a council member for a few more months. I'd like to be able to say, yeah, but my rate, my water rate went up a little bit this year too.
Yeah, and that merger contract, um, it was effective for ten years. And, but that was two thousand eight, I think. So it really was fifteen some years before we ever raised any rates, so.
Yeah, no mercy for them. I mean, they've, they've been, they've been riding on. The water bills that residents have been paying.
I appreciate the feedback. We'll, we'll make those changes into that and, uh, and the, when the budget is prepared.
Another philosophical issue here on the, uh, inside and outside. Well, inside, commercial and inside industrial. I'm not sure who those customers are, but I suspect those are the, uh, plants and the water users. That employ people and, uh, make a significant economic contribution to Valdez. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I'm wondering, I mean, we've. We heard, uh, from one of our biggest employers, might be our biggest employer, not a biggest one maybe, but second biggest. They really got, they were really, uh, they were blindsided, they felt, but they were really upset about the. Water rates last year. The increase. And we're gonna increase them again this year. Again, I just. Philosophically, is that in the best interest of the town's economic development? We lose one or two. We lose even one of those major employers, the water users, we're gonna be hurting for water revenue. We're gonna be hurting for property tax revenue. We're not gonna be a very appealing place for people to move to, to work for one of these companies even though if they're gone, so. I just, I guess I'm questioning, do we really wanna raise rates again on our inside? Commercial and industrial customers.
The increase is just to the base, it's not to the users, correct?
It would, it, you mean the volume charges? No, it's, it's across the board. It's, it's five percent, it would be five percent on each one of those. So, you know, on, on the base, it would be less than a dollar increase. For that.
Yeah, the volume charge goes up twenty.
Twenty cent.
Twenty cents, I guess, or twenty-five cents.
Over three million, it's ten cents.
And that's what gets them, that's what gets the industrial, the big water users. I mean, that's. It's those, uh, per one thousand gallon add-ons.
And if we lose them, then that becomes a burden to our residents, correct? But, I mean, at some point we'll have to raise. Residential rates to make up for what we lose in industry. Is that, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, anytime you lose industry, that's something that happens. But, uh, it, it. I mean, they're a business, so they, you know, they, they know prices will go up as, as we.
See, they get a double whammy because they also get hit with the, uh. Sewer rate increase based on the volume of water. So our big employers. Get both another water increase and a sewer increase on top of it. Do we wanna do that to them? I don't, I'm just wondering.
I don't know how well worded, uh, one percent to sewer, one percent to our industrial customer does not equate to one percent to residential. So if you do lower it, if you lower it one percent, I don't know if Bo knows those numbers off the top of your head. But you could potentially be looking at a huge increase to the other areas. Cause it's not dollar for dollar. Does that, does everyone follow that? Uh, so it's not like we can say, well, let's cut the industrial by one and a half percent and just add it to residential. Those, that number, those numbers will not match.
And I, I have spoken with one of our biggest industrial users and they, they're aware that. We're proposing an increase. So they're, it won't be blindsided this time. I think last year we had failed to communicate that with them, but.
Any more questions, counsel? Proceed, sir.
But if we make that adjustment to inside water, um, that'll be a little less that we'd have to look at borrowing for those projects. So that's, that's the only change that you'll see on the proposed budget would be that, that change. Other than that, utility fund is the same as it was before. Um, no projects were cut. So I really don't have much else to speak to that.
So we're gonna leave the, uh, raise, the increase on industrial, commercial. Customers the way it is and not. Take a look at. Try to. Give them a little break.
Counsel?
Well, you, you just said you talked to the largest industrial user and they're okay?
Right. I didn't tell them what percentage council was thinking, but I did tell them that there would be increases this year.
We can make sure that we communicate after this meeting. Take the pulse. If this is gonna be ridiculously objective, we can bring them back.
That sounds good.
Yeah, so you, I mean, you got. Couple of weeks to do that, so it'd be interesting to see what kind of feedback you get. There's an elephant in the room. I don't want to, I don't want you to call for a German before we talk about the elephant, but, uh.
You're up.
We done with Mr. Whipple?
I hope so.
All right. My question is, we have about a quarter of a million dollars in this budget. For, uh. In the area of compensation. That's twenty-seven thousand dollars to fund a pay study. And it's about, uh, something over two hundred thousand for, uh. Space for salary increases. Now, what does that mean? Uh, the council last year wrestled with this. And the council decided that we would approve a five percent cost of living increase across the board. And that went into effect sometime in July, I believe. Uh, this year, we haven't addressed that question. There's five percent in the budget. We have a new manager. We have a pay study. Are we gonna just dump that five percent cost of living increase on all employees? Or are we gonna give our manager the opportunity to, uh. Introduce a performance evaluation program of some kind? Uh, perhaps introduce some kind of a merit system along with cost of living, uh, system? Get a pay study done and find out, uh, where in our payroll. We, we need the most help. Again, I am all for. Putting this back to our town manager. Let him spend some time on this, let him get into it, let him get a pay study done, let him look, become familiar with our pay scale. To me, our current salary schedule is a pig's breakfast. I mean, you see big gaps. Empty, empty spaces, empty pay grades with no positions in them. You see pay grades with, that mixed police officers in with. Positions that have no relationship that I can connect. So I just think that. We have a quarter of a million dollars here in this budget that we ought to give our new town manager the opportunity. To spend some time on. He probably can't get, probably can't get it done within, uh. The next two weeks, but, uh, if we, if we could just agree that, no, we're not saying. Five percent, everybody across the board in the July paycheck. That's, that's what I think the staff's gonna expect unless the council takes some other position. So I think, do we do that? If we do that, we're gonna take it away from the manager, or are we gonna? Wait for the manager to come back and recommend to us how to use that quarter of a million dollars. That's my question for the council. And maybe we'll ask our, our new manager for his opinion on that too. There we go.
Uh, so, this is. Everything I'm about to say, you gotta realize I've been here. Okay, I just messed up. I've been here, make, you know, one, so after the question was posed. I have a pretty good relationship with a lot of managers in the area. So I just text them, told them happy Mother's Day and I need some help. So, uh, I was able to get responses back from eleven local cities and counties. Uh, and I'm just gonna name them off. Uh, Hickory Maiden, Catawba County, Longview, Newton, Conover, Town of Catawba, Claremont. Granite Falls, Sawmills and Morganton. And I asked them what they was doing for salary increases. Uh, the ranges go from three percent in Sawmills to eight percent in Conover. The average being five point two, three percent starting July one. Uh, this is not a in-depth research by any stretch of the imagination. This is me reaching out to a couple buddies and asking them what they're doing. Um, it's a mixed bag as far as some of them are doing cola only. Some of them are doing a mixture of cola and merit. I will say that most of the ones that are doing a merit have an established program. And they have a full-time dedicated HR department, not a half position that splits between Town and Clerk. I will say that, uh, my long-term goal would be to get a merit system here. Uh, but we have to have the proper infrastructure to implement that. The worst thing you can do is start a program and it fall on its face because you don't have. The, the stuff in the back room to make it work, if that makes any sense. We're also doing a pay study. I don't think there's anything wrong with giving employees something at July one with the inflation that we're seeing and, uh. And just by taking a snapshot at some of our positions, how far we're behind our competitors. Uh, saying that. When we do the pay study, we would equal that out. So, uh, I, I don't foresee. The pay state showing that any of our employees are overpaid. Okay, uh, it may come back and say that they're within range. You have, we have this, we have seventy employees. They make us come back and say thirty-five of them is in range, twenty of them is slightly out of range, and then you have five that are significantly, you know. I think that all works itself out in the wash. We will do whatever council wants, um, but you asked my opinion. I've told you that I will give you the information and then whatever y'all decide, we will implement. And that's, I will answer any questions I can answer at this point, but you also gotta realize I've only been here a week. And I'm only working with the information I, I've been able to get. This is not, again, this is not an in-depth study. Uh, a lot of these cities offer other things such as 401K matching for all employees. They offer, uh, uh, deferred compensation, they offer different longevity schedules, they offer. So it's, it's, you cannot compare apple to apples, you know? What we do here, and you can take, there's probably thirty-five cities in the region. I don't know if you can find two that do exactly the same. Okay, so you gotta realize that even with the pay study, we're not gonna find. Another organization that does the exact same benefits that we do. Every, every, every organization varies a little bit. So five percent to us. May not equal five percent to another city. So you gotta, and, and, and there's no way for me to tell you. If it's more or less without doing some really in-depth research. I know that's not probably the answer y'all wanted to hear, and it's not as clear as you wanted to hear it, but it's the, it's what I have so far.
I think that's good. And, uh, what, what I wanted was an answer because it was hanging out there. I mean, it was. There was no answer to it. So I think what you're saying is. You would be fine if, if we just go ahead and give everybody a five percent pay increase effective July first.
In this situation, yes, because we do not have the program set up to do any merit at this point. And it's not gonna be one of those things you can set that up in two or three months either. And it's unfair to the employees to make them hold and wait. Until we get something done on the back end. When I say a merit program, we're probably talking twelve to eighteen months to get a proper one set up. And get it done correctly. You will find, I will, if we can't do it correctly, we don't need to do it. That is my approach. We're not, I, I don't put Band-Aids on stuff. So, um, if we can do it correctly, I'm all about implementing something like that. But we need to get the, we need to get the stuff in the, it's kinda like when, you know, we're talking about infrastructure and water. Everybody loves to see a new paved road, but nobody wants to see us replace the water line and sewer line up and under it. Well, a lot of times you need to replace the water line before you pave the road. Same concept here. A lot of times, we gotta do stuff on the back end that nobody really sees. Before we can start implementing a program to, for merit and performance evaluations.
There's, yeah, there's one other aspect here, because we're talking salary and of course, we're talking cost of living versus merit. But another fundamental is annual performance evaluations. I don't think we're doing that now. I don't know.
We are. We've been doing that for years.
I believe we are. It's not tied to salaries. So to get them to tie to salaries, it'd be, it'd be a learning curve for everyone involved.
So, but. Okay, so, but you'll be looking at the quality of those annual performance evaluations, I guess.
And we got some education to do for, from everyone from the line level, employees all the way up through our, you know. Up, all the way up the chain, all the way to me. We gotta have some learning, some training that we need to, to implement to make sure that we implement the program correctly.
Yeah, well, we have, our department heads that managed, been promoted in those positions have never had any supervisory training. Formals as far as training. And we kicked that training budget down the road. We had it in there last year. We kicked it into this year, so. You got that money to play with as well.
Council just needs to realize this is an elephant. You know how you eat an elephant, right? One bite at a time. So this is nothing that we're gonna be able to implement in the next couple of months. That, you need to realize that going into it. This, this is gonna be, this is gonna take a little bit of time.
I appreciate your comments and your eyes wide open, it sounds like, looking at the system because we know that there are probably some. Gaps or holes that we need to look at. But in my mind, I, I knew that it was gonna take time to get those systems in place. To be able to look at a merit system. So I mean, it sounds like that's what we need to do and so I appreciate your insight.
And I also appreciate that you've obviously operated with a merit system before. And so you're well aware of how to implement it.
Yeah, so, um, historically, probably the last fifteen to sixteen years, we've done a cola slash merit. So, um, typically, whatever the inflation rate is, we try to do something on cola just because. The positions that's not open, you need to make sure they stay competitive. So let's say a planning position, for example. If you never give a cola and you, and you put that position at twenty thousand dollars, it never goes up. So when you try to hire someone. You have to come back and change it. So cola changes all positions, it's cost of living, it's, it's an increase, but it's not a raise. Okay, so a merit is a, a merit raise. So historically. It, five percent, let's just use that. If we was gonna do this five percent historically, a cola would be like one and a half or two percent cola. And then the remainder of it would be merit. And, uh, the way you do merit, let's say you do a one, two and three percent merit, the, it's a bell curve. So, uh, the majority of them is gonna be in the middle, majority of your employees is gonna be in the middle, so majority of them probably get two percent. Some of your lower performance would get zero or one, and some of your very best high performance would get the full three. No, it's not across the board, everybody's gonna get three percent. That's how our merit system works. When you look at it, it's very much a bell curve. Eighty percent of your employees are gonna stay somewhere in the middle. You're gonna have outliers, ten percent on each, either side. Um, when you look at it, it's very much a bell curve, eighty percent of your employees are gonna stay somewhere in the middle, you're gonna have outliers, ten percent on at least either side. Um, if you have an employee who's continuously getting zero merit or, or the very lowest merit. Historically, there's some disciplinary action and some training or education involved. If not, the employee finds themselves employment elsewhere and you replace that employee. Uh, on the operas, on the upper end, if you have someone who's continuously exceeding expectations. Those are the ones that you look to promote to management once those positions become available. If their background and expertise allows you to do that.
Okay, good.
Thank you, that's why we ask questions.
All right, thank you.
So the staff's got good news today, they didn't have any news till, yeah, till you answered that. Uh, no, one, just one question outside the budget, but uh we had a presentation Monday night about. Uh, our merchants advisory committee plans for Friday nights, starting this Friday night. And I haven't seen anything, any publicity from the town come out about this yet. Are, are we gonna do things to promote attendance and promote our merchants?
We'll get it uh on social media and um, we can't put an insert right now because there's no bills going out as it starts. Um, but we could do it on our social media, yeah. Unless council has any other ideas they'd like to see.
Oh, we part, is the town partner really on this?
It's a, it's a function of the merchants committee.
As long as the town has some function, we can, we can promote it.
Yeah, it's all of our merchants, it's our, it's our merchants advisory committee that the council appointed that's doing this thing.
Yes.
Yes.
So my, my solution would be social media unless y'all have some other ideas. We did, you know, we did get it announced at the meeting last time. Um, by the time the water bills go out, it'll, that would be ending, so.
Yeah, too late.
I think I saw something on social media over the weekend.
Okay.
Because I think I saw a couple of those blank spots were filled in with other, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been on.
It is, so it's been out there a little bit.
I thought we had done that, but I would, I was not gonna say for sure until I looked, because I'm not on the, on social media, so.
Anybody have anything else?
Well, Fish Day was a big success.
It was.
And I think we'll, uh, if you've got a chance, so, uh, Councilwoman Lawen, Councilwoman Zimmerman and our mayor down there. Probably two hundred people lined up to get ready to go in.
How many?
How many were registered?
Hundred and seventy, I think, pre-registered.
I think I talked to uh Joey and he said this was the first time that every single council member showed up. And he wa, he said, including the mayor, he was very impressed, he said that made him feel real good that everybody showed up at that for the community, so. That's, good job, guys, let's keep it up.
I think it was a big, and we need to pat them on the back at our junior.
Yes, at the junior, yeah.
Good point. Anything else?